To the village board at 7:33. All trustees are present and accounted for, which is a lovely sight. Has this meeting been publicly noticed?
Yes, this meeting has been properly noticed in accordance with law.
Thank you very much. So a reminder to anyone who needs to speak this evening, we have this really fancy new sound equipment and you have to talk right into the microphone so that you can hear yourself. I'm not doing it because I like hearing myself. It's just because it's, we need it for the recording purposes. So we are at item four, special order of business. For A, Oaths of Office, trustees Kudo and Lynn.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Repeat after me. I state your full name. I.
For the mic?
Yes, please.
I, Jerry Lynn.
I, Eric Kudo.
Having been elected to the office.
Having been elected to the office.
Of village trustee.
A village trustee.
Swear that I will support the constitution.
Swear that I will support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the constitution.
And the constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome. Clerk Carol is really doing quadruple duty this evening. Moving on to 4B, we have a proclamation of gratitude for Acting Chief Thomas Leventhal. And I sometimes share the duty of reading proclamations, but this one I want to do myself. Even though I have to say that I didn't. This was a collaboration between many people who wanted to reflect on this time and Acting Chief Tom Leventhal's service over the past several months. Gratitude for Acting Chief Tom Leventhal. Whereas Captain Thomas Leventhal was appointed as Acting Chief from September 1, 2021 to May 1, 2022. And whereas upon his appointment, he went from being the only command staff at the lieutenant rank or higher after unprecedented turnover and/or retirement in a short period of time. And whereas Thomas Leventhal assisted the police commission in three hiring promotional processes, including the positions of captain, sergeant, and officer. And whereas Thomas Leventhal has been instrumental in reviewing and implementing approximately 70% of the recommendations identified by the police organizational study after consideration of community feedback, review of best practices, and values of the Shorewood community. And whereas Thomas Leventhal has demonstrated exemplary responsiveness to community feedback, serves as an active visible member of the Shorewood community, effectively engages citizens and encourages opportunities for residents and law enforcement to create positive relationships. And whereas Thomas Leventhal fosters a culture that is committed to community policing. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Anne McKay, village president of Shorewood, do hereby, does hereby proclaim gratitude to Captain Thomas Leventhal for putting the Shorewood Police Department on a solid footing after unprecedented change, laying the groundwork for success in the years to come. Thank you very much. Moving on to 4C, oath of office, Chief Heather Worth. Please step forward.
Oh, yes, you can speak in the podium or you want to use microphone?
Please raise your right. Repeat after following. I state your full name.
I, Heather Worth.
Having been appointed to the position.
Having been appointed to the position.
Of village chief of police.
Of village chief of police.
For the village of Shorewood.
For the village of Shorewood.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the ordinance of the village of Shorewood.
And the ordinance of the village of Shorewood.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do just want to say a couple of words and my friends and family that are here today know that I don't talk a lot. But I first and foremost want to thank the village board, the village president, the village manager, the police commission for appointing me to this position. I'm not going to let you down. Policing is in my soul and I couldn't be happier to be the chief of Shorewood. I want to thank my parents for driving up here, my spouse, and all my friends, my family, loved ones, my mentors. I have so many people here in support of me and I just, I couldn't be more proud to be a part of policing. Right now, I think it's instrumental for change and we're going to do so many great things. And I also want to take a moment to recognize Captain Tom Leventhal as well. I know President McKay read him the proclamation, but he has really left the department in fantastic, in a fantastic way and done some great things in the interim. And I couldn't be happier to be working with him, alongside him, as we continue the work here in the village of Shorewood. So thank you so much for coming tonight. This is a really important day for me, those of you that know what I've been through, to get here. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for taking that opportunity. Look forward to getting to know you more. Moving on to 4D, introduction of the North Shore Health Department Director Becky Rowland. Welcome.
To follow. Thank you. Congrats. Way to, thanks for putting me in this lineup. So I just came to introduce myself today. I'm Becky Rowland. I'm the new. Sorry, I was not close. I'm pretty loud, though.
Yeah. You don't. And you can't make eye contact. So just don't follow any good public speaking rules. Just talk into the microphone.
So challenging for an extrovert to not be able to make eye contact with everyone in the room, but thank you for having me. I'm delighted to fill this position. I'm about one month in, so it's like drinking from the fire hose. I'm a native Chicagoan, so I'm five years in Wisconsin. And I'm a lifelong social servant, so I'm really thrilled to be able to carry on this work in the seven municipalities of the North Shore. I was supposed to talk a little bit about what I've been up to for the last month and it's a lot of acclimating. I've been studying statute and having one-on-ones with the staff, meeting the village managers and the police chiefs and everyone in between, parks and rec folk, and just kind of re-acclimating the department to have the renaissance out of COVID. Their healing, it was a tough time. And I'd love to talk a little bit about what the department's done, maybe in the next footnote. But yeah, I've been seeking mentorship for my local fellow health officers around the state and in Milwaukee County and rethinking the organization of the North Shore Health Department to move us into public health forward, public health 3.0, and to reinvigorate the department. It's a beautiful and amazing team. So thank you.
Thank you. We have a proclamation recognizing North Shore Health Department for their efforts during the COVID-19 pandemic and trustee Stoke Brand has agreed to read that for us. I'm sorry, did I interrupt? Were you gonna? No? Okay.
Whereas COVID-19, a novel strain of the coronavirus, was detected in December 2019 and has subsequently spread throughout numerous countries in the United States, including Wisconsin. And whereas the North Shore Health Department has been working tirelessly to protect all the North Shore communities from the spread of this disease and to prepare for the impacts it may have. And whereas since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, the North Shore Health Department investigated 13,725 cases and confirmed cases and 1,804 probable cases as of March 4, 2022. And whereas the department assisted with the outbreak management of 81 long-term care facilities, 27 businesses, 29 child daycares, and nine schools, along with additional guidance provided to hundreds of businesses and facilities in the North Shore area. And whereas since the initial approval of COVID-19 vaccinations, the department provided a primary series as well as a third dose and boosters to all eligible age groups and to date administered over 11,000 COVID-19 vaccines. And whereas the previous North Shore Health Department Director resigned in April 2021, followed by some additional turnover, Kathy Platt committed to the interim health director role to help with the transition. Kathy has been a tremendous leader for the department during this transition, handling an influx of grant dollars, programs, and staffing to combat new COVID-19 variants while maintaining the majority of the department's other programs and services. And whereas the North Shore Health Department will continue its efforts during this pandemic to combat COVID-19 through education, vaccinations, research, and adhering to best practices presented by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Wisconsin Department of Health Services and other agencies. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed by all chief elected officials on behalf of their governing bodies in the North Shore municipalities, we recognize the excellence performed by our North Shore Health Department and the extraordinary commitment of public service displayed by Kathy Platt during her transitionary role as interim health directors. Signed by the seven village presidents.
So much. I take no credit for this and I do honor Kathy's work every day. I'm able to take over for her and she is happily retiring on May 31st. But I also just want to highlight this small but mighty team, including, you know, those 16,000 cases as of the end of March and over 11,000 vaccinations provided, accumulated more than 1,000 comp hours, which they're tired, y'all. They're really, really tired. They worked their butts off and they held countless and continue to, sorry, to conduct countless vaccination clinics and they continue to do so. There's two this week. We're still really targeting our most vulnerable populations, folks over 55 and kiddos under five. But we also have fun every day and it's a joyful workspace, even though people are tired. We just ask for your grace and your empathy and get vaccinated. So we're so lucky. I feel so lucky to be part of this team and thank you so much for this proclamation.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you. All right, shifting gears on topics. 4F, update on 4480 Lake Drive Bluff Slope Retaining Wall Evaluation Manager Ewol.
Clerk Carol, we have Phil, our village engineer from Strand, who's there. So if we could share the screen with him, that would be great. And he's going to walk us through a presentation. Thanks for joining us tonight, Phil.
Yep. Good evening, everyone. Let's see. Get the screen share figured out here. Okay, can everybody see the screen okay?
That is, we can see your screen. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so this update is for the storm sewer repair at 4480 North Lake Drive. Some of the information will be, some of the previous village board members will be familiar with it. For others, this will be new information. So I'm going to kind of start from, and give a full history of the project and then update of where things are at right now. So project background. So back in late 2019, there's a village storm sewer structure that's located at 4480 North Lake Drive. This is, there's time when there's high lake levels, a lot of instability in the bluffs. So during this time, there is a slide that knocked over the village's storm sewer structure and damaged it at this property. So from there, Miller engineers and scientists completed a geotechnical evaluation in spring of 2020. And Miller completed a design of repairs for the storm sewer in summer, fall of 2020. In November, bids were received. Construction was winter of 2020 and spring of 2021. And then in July 2021, there's some additional reinforcing added to one of the retaining walls that was beginning to tilt. The general contractor for the project was UPI. The total project cost was about $1 million. Since that time, since July, when the additional reinforcement was added, there was additional rain in August, which created some additional movement to the wall. So we seeked proposals from different engineering firms, geotechnical firms for an independent review of the project. So GZA was selected in December 2021. They completed their review in February 2022. And they provided a proposal for additional field evaluations and technical evaluations in March 2022. So this is all stemming from is, there's been issues with the retaining walls that have been installed to protect the storm sewer and the property. So there was tilting, so I'll get into here. And right now, we're, the bluff is not stable in its current state. So here's a photo of the repaired storm sewer structure. So there's a concrete retaining wall you can see on the left and then two storm sewer manholes. The storm sewer itself is actually very deep in this area. It's over 50 feet deep and the discharge is into Lake Michigan. You can see in the photo, can't see the discharge, but the discharge is right on the lakeshore. There's two or three retaining walls. There's the north upper retaining wall. This wall has held. There's been no noticeable movement. The yard is on the left here and then the right is the bluff. The south upper retaining wall, so this is on the south side of the property. There has been no noticeable movement on this wall either. It's the lower retaining wall where we've had issues. So you can see in the photo on the right, there's been some bowing or tilting of the lower retaining wall. To the right too, you can see where the storm sewer structure is in the concrete retaining wall that's located just to the west of the storm sewer. So as I'd mentioned, there was an initial movement of the wall. So additional reinforcement was installed in July 2021, a heavy rain in August. There was more movement observed. So between May 13, 2021, and July 28, there is nine to 10 inches of movement in the most severe areas from July 28 to August 11. So when there's that rainfall event, there was one to one and a half inches in the most severe areas. And then from August 11 to March 3, this actually should be 2022, there was very little movement. There also wasn't a lot of rainfall during that time period either, but it appeared the wall may have been stabilizing. But then between March 3 and April 27, there was another inch and a half of movement when there's the kind of the spring thaw and additional rain in April. So it's apparent the wall is, or the bluff is not stable currently. So this, this is a plan view of the retaining wall. So this pink line is the north retaining wall. And then this pink and purple line on the bottom is the south retaining wall. And then there's all these little squares or additional anchors that were installed to provide additional support. The property 4480 is to, in the upper part of this plan and then Lake Michigan would be on the lower part. So Miller engineers had proposed the addition of an interceptor drain to help relieve water pressure on the bluff. So their conclusion was seepage of water along where the sliding surface. So there's a, I guess we could say a chunk of soil here that has broken from its natural position and is starting to slide down the bluff. And at that sliding surface, that interface between the soil that hasn't moved and soil that's moved, there's water there, which kind of creates a lubricating sliding surface for that material. And that's what's sliding into the wall and creating the wall to move. So they proposed to install a drain system to intercept that water and convey the water to the storm sewer system to relieve the pressure, relieve all the water pressure on the bluff and also to remove it from the sliding surface. So they had a drain underneath or just west of the upper retaining wall. So this would be in the yard for 4480. And then they had proposed some drains along the, in the bluff between the east wall or the lower wall and the upper wall. So at that point, we put that idea on pause and when solicited proposals for peer review and selected GZA, Geo-Environmental. So they're in January, they're on site for a site visit. This is the upper retaining wall in this photo and then this is a scarp. So this is where that lower, or the area above the lower retaining wall is beginning to slide. So there's a crack near the upper retaining wall slid, creating an eight to 24-inch high scarp. They completed a local, global, and local bluff slope stability analysis. So the soil properties are something that, I guess there's some variation of what different geotechnical consultants use. So they use data from a nearby site that they were involved with to estimate the effective stress parameters of the soils. With, through their analysis, they found that the lower retaining wall is constructed in a stable manner for short-term undrained conditions. But their modeling showed that under long-term drained condition, the wall was likely underdesigned with the original anchorage. With the additional anchorage, they wanted to complete more testing to determine if it was in a stable condition. And based on the movement in the last month, it's not in a stable condition. So this will give kind of an idea of what the sliding area looks like. So this white line, I don't know how easily anyone can see it, but there's kind of these black vertical lines and at the bottom is a white line. That's the approximate failure plane. So that's the portion of the bluff that is no longer adhered to the rest of the bluff and is sliding and putting pressure on the retaining wall. So it's called the failure plane. So the failed section of slope is currently retained by the lower retaining wall with negligible soil shear strength along the failure plane. So since it's separated from the rest of the soils on the bluff, there's very little friction between that, that separated piece of bluff and the remainder of the bluff. So it's actually weaker than they say when there's a drained condition or an undrained condition. So if this area is saturated, but it still hasn't failed, there's more shear strength or more friction than in its current condition. So GZA recommended additional testing to determine the existing soil properties at the failure plane based on the additional movement in April. The slope's not stable, so the additional testing's not required. This graph shows the movement of the wall. So on the very left-hand side was July 28, 2021. This first increase or first movement, this was at that rain event in August. And then you can see that's fairly stable. And then March was a reading and then the last reading was last week and you can see the additional movement in April. And GZA had said that this was something they'd observed to on other properties along the bluff in between March or towards the end, actually middle of April, they saw several movements similar to this on other projects. It's something that's not uncommon for, for Lake Michigan bluffs. So next steps, GZA is evaluating directionally drilling a WIC drains to remove water from the slide area. So these would be similar to what Miller had proposed for the stormwater drainage system, except they'd be directionally drilled from the top of the bluff, from the property, kind of the flat part of the property down into the bluff. And then they would connect and drain into the storm sewer. So these would be to remove water from, from the slide area and from the top of the bluff. And then GZA and both Miller are also looking into potential solutions to stabilize the bluff between the lower and upper retaining walls. So that's where things are at now. The next step be to, unfortunately, that looks like there'll have to be more material removed or drains, drains put in and potentially more material removed to stabilize the area between the upper and lower retaining walls. With that, open it up for any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the trustees on the technical nature of the update? Trustees Oakbrun?
So I believe it indicates that at one point, Miller thought that they would add more reinforcement to the bottom retaining wall. Is that correct?
More reinforcement was added in July of last year. And at this point, there's no proposal for more. They've added, I guess, probably as much as they feasibly can, unless they went to a different method of support.
So we'd be shifting a strategy from reinforcing the retaining wall to putting in more drainage.
Yes, putting in more drainage and potentially moving, removing some of the soils that have slid because they're unstable. And you'd remove them and replace them with some, a more stable soil, like a crushed stone.
And so would you do that horizontally? I mean, I don't understand.
Here, let me scroll back. So where this, this area with the white line and the black vertical lines, that area would be, or a portion of it at least, would be removed and then it would be replaced with...
Go to your visual, please.
Can, you see my screen okay?
I'm sorry, no.
Oh. Okay, how about now?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So this area above the white line where these black vertical lines are, that would potentially be removed because that's the unstable soils. And that would be replaced with a more stable material, like a crushed stone.
That sounds like a big operation. That sounds like a big operation, is it? I mean.
Yes, it's not, it's not a small, it's nothing that, it, it needs heavy equipment, I guess would be the best way to put it.
And so can you give us a ballpark? I mean, is this something we go out to bids for or how, how would this work financially?
Yeah, the steps would be to have a geotechnical engineer prepare plans and specifications for it. And then, yeah, I would likely go out to bid unless it was, you know, an emergency where if this failed and then the yard was starting to be in jeopardy, you know, maybe it would become an emergency at that point and it wouldn't go out to bids. But I would recommend if we have time, you know, to, to get bids for it.
And so what, what happens to our relationship with Miller Engineering?
Me there, I, I wouldn't recommend that we use them for this updated design. But I think having them still involved and in discussions of potential solutions is, is prudent since they have the history and the background on the site.
Say, so if we do the removal of the, the soil and then installing the drains comparatively cost wise, are they about, like, how much are we looking at here? With the, because you're recommending those two things, correct?
Yeah, and the cost would come more out once we have an actual design. I mean, right now I'm, I'm just kind of relaying some preliminary ideas that the, like GZA has, has suggested or Miller has suggested. And that might not ultimately be what the best design is. You know, GZA may come out and say, we want to, you know, we recommend doing this other method and it would have a completely different cost. So I'm hesitant to, to throw a number out there because right now there are just too many unknowns.
Yeah, the, the language is evaluating and looking into, there's no recommendation forthcoming at this time.
Okay, I guess I'm just, I'm curious. It looks like at this point, I don't know if I have a GZA number, but I, I did get a number from Mark today where at this point we're into this for about one and a quarter million dollars. So it's just, I'm wondering if, if the resident, do we feel, how precarious is it right now? And I mean, if we would get a lot of rain, how bad could it be?
I mean, if the wall failed at this point, this area above the white line would slide down. And then the, the kind of the natural erosion of the bluff is this area would become weaker. So that would have the potential to create some instability in the, the upper retaining wall, which eventually could lead to, you know, more instability in the yard area. So there is the potential if this failed for that natural kind of movement and erosion of the bluff to continue up, up the bluff and impact the upper retaining wall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? So do we have a sense of what, oh, trustee?
Just very, very quick, didn't something like this happen about 10 years ago at Atwater?
Right.
And was part of that solution, if I remember, was plants? Didn't they add better plants to retain the soil? Is that an option here or is that just, is it way too far gone for that type of the, of a solution?
Plants were one of the things GZA had suggested if it was stable. Now that this area is determined to be unstable, plants aren't going to help at this point here on the upper portion that's still stable, they would help. And that's certainly something that'll be included in any sort of design. You know, is what others, what other items can you do to make this more stable? And planting is certainly an item and this was planted. There's native, native vegetation. It just didn't catch quick enough to stabilize the area.
Okay, thank you.
And there was a lot of rebuilding underneath. Yeah.
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 Question I had, I mean, this is one thing that has been, you know, I've been a trustee for a year and this is one thing that has been kicking around for a while. I'm just trying to, you know, get an understanding of, you know, how confident we are in our understanding of this situation now relative to where we were a year plus ago. And, you know, are there any, you know, what, what would you say are the major outstanding question marks? I mean, it's, you know, obviously important that we address this, but I'm just, you know, is there, you know, should, should we be thinking about a bigger solution here? Or are we confident that this is the right fix at this point in time, based on what we know? Right, that they're still evaluating.
Yeah, I would say right now we don't have a, a recommended fix. I'm just, I kind of gave you some, some of the preliminary ideas. So yeah, if, if GZA comes back and says there should be sheet piling driven in or something, you know, we'll certainly, you know, if that's what it's, they think it would take to fix it, then that's something we would certainly evaluate and bring to the village board. We, we certainly don't want to do anything that we don't think is going to be a long term solution.
And I'm sorry, just for a quick follow up, just for context, I mean, do we have a sense of, you know, similar dynamics playing out in any of the other bluffs in the region?
Yeah, GZA, like I said, they had seen similar slides in this, this kind of elevation of the bluff or this area where there's a softer, I, I skipped over a lot of stuff that would prevented or presented previously, but this light green area is the softer soil. So that's the area where it's kind of triggering these instability. And they did see slides similar to this on other projects they were involved with in this general soil profile and the areas with the same soil profile. So it's, yes, it's, it's common and, you know, they, it sounds like they have some good experience in the area and, you know, what, and the bluff conditions.
Thank you.
Trustees Stokran.
So generally speaking, would you say that the bluff is constantly shifting?
Yeah, I mean, the evolution of the bluffs are to, I mean, I'm, I'm not a geotechnical expert. So I don't want to get into too much detail. But yeah, in general, you know, if the bluff was left to be, it typically starts to erode from the bottom and then that kind of works its way up. And it just keeps kind of, you know, working its way back. And it fluctuates with lake levels and that sort of thing. So it's a natural process for the bluff to erode. And that's why, you know, people in the village, you know, at Atwater, where you put in the retaining wall systems to stabilize it. And, and for the most part, it generally can be stabilized. Here, there is just an area that, that for whatever reason, didn't behave like Miller had anticipated it would behave and it's creating issues now.
So there's really nothing to be gained by doing, it sounds like the extra soil test, the boring.
No, because the extra test was going to be determine what kind of friction remained between this failed area and the existing, the native soils that are undisturbed to try and see what the cohesion was between this presumed slide area and the native soils. And since it's moved now, we can, they can safely assume there isn't much cohesion there. It's not, not in a stable state. So the hope was that it had shifted initially and had kind of readhered, you could say, to the soils below and there was some, some friction there. And that was what was difficult to determine what it was. But since it moved recently, there's no, there's, I guess the friction is minimal.
So what if you just put in the drainage system?
If you put in the drainage system, that would help because it would relieve water pressure from the soil and presumably remove the water at this slide interface. The wall would still be tilted and I would, I'd have to ask the geotechnical experts if they thought that the soil could re adhere to stable position. But from the discussions I've had with them, it doesn't sound like they think it can at this point. I think it's, it's moved too much to, that it's putting too much pressure on the wall and the wall is eventually going to fail if it's left, if, if just water is removed. But that'll be part of what.
If the wall fails, do we jeopardize the new storm sewer?
Likely not, that's far enough away. So if you look at, there's this bench here and our storm sewer is kind of in this area. So if it fell, it would just fall into here and our storm sewer would still be, it, it wouldn't jeopardize it. It would prevent access to it. This flat area was meant to provide access to it. So it, it impede on the access, but it wouldn't, the storm sewer is not in jeopardy at this point.
I mean, I just wonder if that's another option. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Certainly, if you have follow up questions or suggestions, it would be great to forward those and can take them into consideration. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. We'll close out that item and move on to item five consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move. Second.
Motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Arndorfer. Any discussion?
Item five E is in Edward.
Yes, five E. Anything else? Any other discussion? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of five E friendly amendment?
Some move.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda minus five E, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to item six, items removed from the consent agenda. That would be item five E, consider service agreement with Cairo Communications for environmental scan and strategic plan. Trustee Stokran.
Thank you. I just had a question after I, we discussed this at, I believe, the April fourth meeting. When I was reading the information about how we would look at social media posts, I wondered if it would be good to review for the people who will be involved. So there's transparency, so we know what kind of social media posts will be reviewed, how and why, for some context.
So I, I wanted to, you know, just speak to that. And trustee Stokran and I, I talked a little bit about this earlier today. You know, from my conversations with our partners at Cairo, this, this scan is, and this process is going to look like we need it to look. And they are going to be willing to work with us on that. I think that when it comes to, and I, I don't want to speak for you since you're here, if you want to answer some questions. But what, what stood out to me when I heard trustee Stokran's concern here was, is this an opportunity and maybe this will be part of the work that, that Cairo does is to make sure we have a social media policy. I, I did not view this as, as them taking their time because I believe this is only 20 hours of time, you know, to, you know, dig through employee social media or anything like that. You know, this is about, and my guess is, you know, what, what conversations are had and the Shorewood Community Network is kind of getting a pulse on those conversations. What kind of social media has the village itself posted? And not, you know, digging into the posts of any individual employees. I do think it's, it's a good opportunity to have a social media policy and make sure that people are posting things that are consistent with our, you know, our values, you know. Certainly don't want to infringe on anyone's First Amendment rights. But, you know, would it be concerning to me if we have a new director of the North Shore Health Department? Would it be concerning to me if personally, if she was posting things like COVID isn't real, don't get vaccinated? Yes, that would be very concerning in light of that position that she holds. So, but I think that's a very different thing than, than what we're going to be actually looking at. But I will turn it over to the expert here.
If I may, Dr. Blanks, I just want to clarify. So the action before us is to approve a service agreement on a scope of works that's already been approved. You don't have to vote yes on it, but I just wanted to give that, that background. But it's, if this question occurred to trustee Stokran and the contractor is here and able to respond, we can have that. Thank you, Dr. Blanks.
Thank you. Well, actually, the answer has really been given. I'll just reinforce it by what the indicated. We're not going to look at individual staff posts or social media. It is just to look at media, for instance, what is sure would say the, saying, is there an article in? No, there are community, social media networks. We're not going to take names, it's not that. But when we are doing the environmental scan and, and it's important to us to understand the context in which we're operating and thus the context that the municipality is operating. So just a review of what's out there on the social media platforms in the community. If people are connecting with what we're doing, if they're connecting with racial equity issue, what are those feelings? That's what we're, just to have a general of the climate and the environment.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
You're welcome.
Any other, any other questions or a motion at this time? Trustee Stokran.
I move to approve the service agreement with Cairo Communications for environmental scan and strategic plan.
Second. Okay, motion by trustee Stokran, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Looking forward to working with you, Dr. Blanks.
We're excited to work with you.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to item seven, public hearings, there are none tonight. Item eight, citizens to be heard. This item is for matters not on the agenda or occurring later in the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to be heard this evening? If you are on the Zoom and would like to be heard, please raise your hand, turn your camera on and prepare to give your name and address, please. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody unmuted or with a hand raised. All right, no citizens to be heard this evening. Moving on to item nine, new business. We have one item this evening, nine A, consider public works committee design concept recommendations for the 2025 North Oakland Avenue pavement replacement project. Direct, is Leanne going to take this? Okay, Director Bushlick.
I am going to start. Thank you. Good evening. Please recall that on March fourteenth of this year, the Public Works Committee, Standing Committee of the Village Board, heard a consultant recommendation, project consultant being Clark Dietz, for design concepts related to the North Oakland Avenue 2025 Plan Pavement Replacement Project. You'll recall that the scope of work identified a review of recommendations in a number of documents, including the analysis, the village's guidebook for green infrastructure and the village's pedestrian and bicycle master plan. And Mustafa Emir, who, who is in the audience with us tonight, in his firm reviewed those, those recommendations as they would be applied to any pavement replacement project and presented those concepts to the Public Works Committee at that meeting on March fourteenth. Prior, or following that discussion, the committee recommended three to zero to advance those concepts to the village, the full village board for consideration. That is your agenda item this evening. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to trustee Ursink, Public Works Committee Chair, for his, his comments or thoughts related to the committee's action.
Thank you, Leanne. Yeah, so I think after further review, we, we met with several different stakeholders in the community, several committees and based on feedback that we received from. several committees and based on feedback that we received from various residents and trustees, we decided that it would probably be appropriate to bring this back for review, this item back for review. You know, so then we discussing with Amir and Rebecca and trustee McCag, President McCag, we sit here before you with updated plans or, or plans for the, or designs, I should say, sorry, designs for North Oakland.
So you'd like to, so your recommendation is that it go back to committee at this time for that review to happen? And then come forward with the either same or different recommendation?
Yeah, exactly.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Yep. So I move, I move to approve the design concepts recommended by Public Works Committee and request that Public Works Committee to review the application of the recommended design concepts on the block by block basis at a future Public Works Committee meeting.
Second. Motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff. Any discussion? Trustee Stokbrand.
So I'm confused why we would approve design concepts and then review the application of the recommended design concepts. Wouldn't we want to just request that this be go, that it go back to the Public Works Committee to review the recommended design concepts? Because I don't understand what we'd be approving. You know what I'm saying?
We have clarification on the process?
Sure. So when the Public Works Committee first met, they agreed and recommended concepts.
Are they listed here somewhere? So I would know what I'm voting, because it, to approve the design concepts, and I can't see what I would be voting for.
Things like
There was some green, green infrastructure. There was some, some bump outs. Those were, those were a variety of things. Leanne, if you want to comment.
Sure. My understanding is that that phrase, design concepts relates to the identum, excuse me, the items that were specifically identified as recommendations in the various documents that I mentioned earlier. So that would be the recommendations of the transportation and parking analysis, recommendations from the pedestrian bicycle master plan and recommendations from the guidebook for green infrastructure. For, it's a specific example, the, the transportation parking analysis had some recommendations related to the entrance to the metro market parking garage. Those were, those were recommended by the Public Works Committee. There were also a general reference to bump outs in, in the, the transportation parking analysis. Those were also the design concepts approved by the committee. Green infrastructure was also identified and mentioned. Again, those would be, those would be the considered design concepts.
Those are contained within the slides in our packet from the Clark Dietz.
Correct.
But I thought there were concerns about some of them and we wanted to provide a block by block review. So I'm not comfortable approving a design concept that's not specifically outlined. When we're sending it back to the committee, I think it should be very clear what we're approving.
Would you like to amend the, well, we have, procedurally, we have a motion on the floor. We can have some more discussion, but I just want to remind you, we have a motion on the floor that's been first and seconded. So it's being discussed now. We will need to play through whether that passes or not, and then there can be an alternate motion. But let's have some more clarification on what this motion means. Trustee Baldoff.
So I just, I want to understand and make sure I'm getting this right. And I'm going to try to do an analogy because that's helpful for my brain. What I'm understanding is that we are, you know, talking with our consultants here and we've, we're going to agree, like, we want a dessert and we decided it has to have, you know, lemons and blueberries and vanilla and almonds, right? And then they're going to come back to us and say, we have a recipe for a cake. We have a recipe for a pie. We have a recipe for a scone. We have a tart, all the different choices. But they all have to contain those elements. Is that a fair-ish way to describe this?
It's close. So the
And then I would like the dessert also, please.
Right.
So I think one of the, just to dovetail on that, I think one of the things with regards to the design that's important in North Oakland is that it's, each block is different. You know, there are different constraints physically in the environment. So one of the reasons why I think it's really great to take the concepts or the lemons and the blueberries and see how they play out on each block is so we can really provide that detail to the public before finalizing the design. What I heard at the last Public Works meeting were vested stakeholders, such as the Pet and Bike Committee, the Conservation Committee, members of the village board, who really had a desire to understand how those concepts are implemented. So it does, the, you know, the devil's in the details with that. So to give the engineer the availability to do that, have that review done with the, with the committee and invite those stakeholders back to go through that level of detail, I just think would be an incredible experience and really provide the village board with the feedback they need from the community in order to finalize a design before moving forward.
So to be clear, this doesn't, this motion that is on the floor right now is to create that direction. So we aren't, we're approving basically what was presented and recommended from the Public Works Committee and saying yes, but go back to committee and go block by block with how this is going to actually look and do that in committee before it comes back to the village board. That's what this motion is.
Can I say something real quick too? I would just say I, the block by block part is, is crucial because, because I remember when we got the bike lanes painted on Oakland Avenue, there was, the reason that it hadn't been done in the past was because it took time to review each block and see where they would fit and what would, what would work. So it is, it is kind of a unique area in that way. And then, so that makes sense to me. And then with these kind of recommendations through this presentation, these, these are all like run of the mill, normal recommendations that, that you would see. All these things have, have been in the pedestrian bike safety plan for, you know, the last decade at least. You know, nothing, nothing here looks strange in any way. But my, my only one question is, are we limited to only these enhancements? Or if you go back to it and look at it block by block, could you come back to the board and say, oh, we also could do this or something else? Is that still on the table in the further analysis? Do you know, Arthur?
I, you know, I think right now going back by, block by block, we are, we're going to see what comes up. But I think right now all of the elements are, are generally kind of there in front of you. So I don't think there's a ton of, a ton of wiggle room from, from where we are right now.
Okay. And then, so there won't be any surprises though either. So, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Well, so are we, if we're, we're approving design concepts, so if I vote yes, am I approving 10 bump outs? Oh, am I approving 10 tree pits? Am I approving, am I not going for the traffic signal?
I don't think that that's within, that is not part of this motion to approve those things.
That will come back at a future.
So then I don't understand what am I voting for?
For it to go back to the committee for further analysis and further review on a block by block basis.
Correct. Not every block, not every area of the curb will be receptive to placement of a tree pit. That's just one example. Because remember, we're focusing, we have to take into consideration that underground infrastructure and then the above ground infrastructure. And another example I could provide would be with just the bus stop locations in general. You know, making sure that once design, design concepts are implemented, are there any impacts to those? Does it modify it at all? And each of those locations are just very specific to the blocks in which they're placed and how the, the curbing, the pedestrian access, how those other design concepts would, would correlate with, with some of them. So it's, it's easier to take a look at those when you're in the actual environment because one corner is not going to be the same as the next.
It just seems to me what we need to do is send this back to the committee for a block by block review of recommendations.
I think that's what we're proposing right now.
And that's not what the motion said.
Okay. So why don't we vote on this? We have a motion on the floor, so we need to vote on it. And if it fails, then there can be another motion. So I guess we have a difference of opinion as to whether the language in the motion that's been approved is consistent in intent with the way that trustee Stokbrand re-verbalized it. Is that part of what we need to figure out so that you know? Yes.
I mean, I, I think I would be open to if anybody has, you know, different language. But I, I think that, you know, it says in the motion, review the application of the recommended concepts on a block by block basis. So I guess I'm just wondering what we're still, if there's something that you want to add to that?
No, I would just, I have a motion that I could read that I've articulated, that I've written, but.
I'd rather take the vote right now.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor. So you could make a friendly amendment.
I can make a friendly amendment. I will. I make a friendly amendment to move to request the Public Works Committee review the application of the recommended design concepts on a block by block basis at a future Public Works Committee meeting. And I'd like to include visual illustrations of recommendations for each block.
I'm not, I need a little help.
My question is, does it, does not including approval of the design concepts, is that an issue?
It is for me.
But is that an issue in terms of moving the work forward? Because I'm, I'm comfortable with, I'm comfortable with the motion as it is on the floor.
I'm as well.
And I don't think that we should remove the approval of the design concepts.
Okay. Any other discussion from trustees? And if not, we'll go ahead and take the vote on this motion and depending on the outcome, we would forward. Okay. Is anybody else, I just want to make sure that people understand. So if you vote yes, then this will go back to committee for a block by block review and it will come back to the village board with design, actual design recommendation. Right? Mustafa, is that your understanding as well? Or? Actually. So a vote yes for the motion on the floor directs that process to happen. A vote no would not direct that process to happen. And then there would be, basically, we would need another motion because right now this issue is held. It's not going anywhere. So any questions about the motion on the floor? Okay, everybody's clear on it? Yeah. Trustee Kodo? I'm not questioning, but I just want to make sure because I don't want people to say like, I didn't understand. Okay.
I didn't understand it. You know.
Okay, that's what I thought so, but you know, it's everybody's first meeting. We had a lot of clapping earlier. All right. All those in favor of the motion, let's read back the motion.
Trustee Ursink moves, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff, to approve the design concepts recommended by the PW Committee and request the PW Committee to review the application of the recommended design concepts on a block by block basis at a future PW Committee meeting.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries six, one. With trustee Stokbrand. Okay. So that, she's doing notes. Okay. All right. So motion carries. We will move on. Item 10, reports of village officials. I have a few. Earlier, no, it was a week ago, I went to the League of Municipalities, Wisconsin Municipalities Urban Council Meeting in Madison. It was a discussion, they have had an urban alliance in the past made up of mayors and city managers and presidents of municipalities 10,000, population 10,000 or higher. There are approximately 80 of those in the state. It represents the majority of the population in the state. And those leaders have focused on policy issues that have direct impact on municipalities. So the discussion was around reinstating this group and how it would move forward, how it would function, what topics would be, what issues would be taken up. There's a lot of interest in local finance reform, as you might imagine, with shared revenue decreasing consistently and us being so limited on how we can diversify our revenues. So I look forward to participating in that. It was a great group. Local Progress convening in August 2022. There's a national organization of local elected officials called Local Progress. They have a platform surrounding about four or five progressive issues around economic justice, racial justice, et cetera. They offer a convening and then other leadership opportunities throughout the year. Those are typically free. I have attended in the past and found it very helpful. I don't know how many elects they would provide a stipend to from each municipality, but I will forward the information and you are welcome to follow up on it on your own. Let's see, I issued a proclamation for King's Day.
Excuse me, I have a question. Should that be local progressives?
The name of the organization is Local Progress.
Okay, thank you.
I issued a proclamation for King's Day last Wednesday, I believe it was. In, Mayor Johnson issued one as well. King's Day is a, is a Dutch holiday. But the Greater Bike, let's see, the Greater Shorewood Bikers Collective organized an event to celebrate King's Day because of their love of biking and all things biking. So, and beer. So anyway, it was nice to do something in, in the spirit of friendship and good health and cycling in our community and with the city of Milwaukee. And for one day, there were no borders. As that was, that was my soundbite for the day. Village Board Committee appointments, the email with those appointments is included in our packet this evening. I wanted to thank everyone for being willing to serve. And trustee Ursink has volunteered to be the Conservation Committee liaison. And trustee Kudo has volunteered to connect with the Historical Society as their liaison. So thank you very much.
Excuse me, did I tell you I, I'm willing to continue to serve with parks and open spaces?
Yes. Did I not put that on the list? So we'll make sure that that's on the list. Thank you for doing that. If anyone has any questions about that, please follow up with me. Finally, updates on police shift meetings. Rebecca and I had those last Wednesday as well. And it, they were, it was the first time that we had gone when we didn't have a specific policy item that was coming up on the Public Safety Committee. So there wasn't specific kind of input. We were talking to them about reflecting on the past six months and really consolidating what their priorities are in connecting with new leadership and, and, and everybody kind of going back, just sort of assisting with that. just sort of assisting with that transition and what their priorities might be and what they would communicate because our expectation is that the new chief chief worth will listen and and want to know their expertise and and what they are really proud of in the work that they do. The conversations expanded to include it just made me realize we really need to get to know each other and how it continues to be challenging to balance the institutional and political discussion of policing with the actual people who show up and do the job and follow the policies that we have approved and that are on paper. And that that dichotomy can feel very confusing at times. And I can really appreciate for first responders especially, that they need very clear communication. They need very clear direction. Their the job and the way that they do their job can be life and death at sometimes. And so it's very important for us to build an environment of clear communication and getting to know each other before, you know, taking on conversations that might involve changing policy. So I would encourage you to connect with the officers. Next time we schedule these, I'll invite others. We can't have a quorum, but we can rotate trustees in and out of them. And also Police Week is coming up May 15. And I was in it was I was made aware that we've never celebrated it. And that would be something I would like to change this year. So we'll be in communication with ways. And feedback we received is just, you know, stop by and say hello, send an email, drop a card when you see an officer in the community, not while they're on a call for service, but telling them that you appreciate them, that you want to get to know them, introduce yourself. You know, those are all things that officers say that and staff communicate that it makes them feel seen and heard and seen as people and not an institution, which moving forward, that's going to be really important for us to create. And I don't think anyone in the country has figured out how to do it. So it's up to us. So anyway, those were my thoughts from there. And I will move on to 10B reports of village trustees. Trustee Ursink.
Sure, I can make it real quick. Last week, there was a facilities open house at the schools, and I was able to stop by Lake Bluff.
Thank you.
And it was incredible. They've done a fantastic job with our schools and really, really just happy that that our community voted voted to, you know, to to do the facility upgrades. And for that referendum, I think it's made a world the difference. And and it was just a fantastic experience. So glad to and we haven't been in the schools now for two years. Parents haven't really been able to tour the schools. So this is the first opportunity, and and it was fantastic. So really, shout out to the schools.
I thank you for bringing that forward. I was able to go to the high school, and it just blew me away. And the students that were on hand to talk about it were so excited. So.
Yeah, same as we had students, you know, I think fifth and sixth graders tore us around, and they were they were fantastic.
Any other trustee more bald?
I would say another shout out to our schools for having a lovely prom for our high schoolers. And I'm sure it was really wonderful for them to feel some normalcy after a couple of years of things being so weird. And, you know, kudos to the school and to the Health Department for, you know, all the kids had to get tested before they were able to attend. So reports that I got were that it was a lovely time. It was great to see all the pictures of everybody dressed up on social media. So I'm happy that the kids got to do something fun and normal.
Good. What else? Trustee Stokbrand.
I would like to thank the village staff, the DPW, and the residents who came out for Arbor Day. The celebration was on Menlo Boulevard. We planted two, we didn't, I watched people plant two trees. And we had a turnout, probably a dozen or so people, and the weather was decent.
That's significant. All right, any other reports? All right, reports of village manager.
Included in your packet was notification that was provided that funds have been raised for the installation of a bench near the canoe kayak launch that's going to be installed in Hubbard Park. And so I anticipate that donation being placed in the near future with the request that the bench be made in in honor of former trustee Mike Maher, who we all know had a very dedicated passion for ensuring that the park was cared for in the best way that it could be. So wanted to let you know that that is here. We're just waiting on getting our signed contracts back from the contractor because I can't make an amendment to that contract until I have the the original back. So you can just see and look forward to having that come up on a future agenda item. But I wanted to let this group know because I know that there was some discussion about the bench when that project was initially approved.
Thank you. Item 11, future items of consideration. Trustee Stokbrand.
I'd like to ask that the item be put on the an item be put on a future agenda that the Village Board consider a second resolution. We have different board members now supporting the current striping on Lake Drive when Lake Drive is reconstructed in 2026. I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Stokbrand, seconded by trustee Ursink. I was actually trying to second, but I'll give it to you.
You can please take it.
People aren't used to me.
So quick to second.
Just a point of clarification. So the last time we the the sitting board approved it, it wasn't done by a resolution, but it was done by a motion. Would it be bringing back that motion?
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to.
Whatever it was.
Perfect. Thank you.
I am confused about procedure. I think the intent is that you want to get everybody on board with the striping.
Yeah, I think we have a whole new board, not a whole.
Well, it isn't a whole new board.
Significantly different board. And it would, I think it would, it might help us to show again, you know, that we think we've got a functioning model on that street, and we want to keep it.
Is there a way to do it without reconsidering the vote? That's okay. Okay. The a value statement of values. Okay, great. That's what I wanted to make sure is that we were able to do this.
Is there any reason we can't do a resolution?
Would it have more hoots?
Right, would it? Yeah, would it be more? I know it's not binding or anything, but it I don't know if like a formal statement of the board is maybe a stronger statement to our partners at the state. I mean, I'm fine with either.
I would defer to power. I would whatever makes the strongest statement. I would defer to staff to guide us on that.
Does the motion need to be changed regarding or because it's just putting it on the agenda, right? How is the motion worded at this time?
Right now, it's worded with a resolution, and then I in discussion clarified that it was a motion the last time that the board provided their direction on the striping. But it could be accomplished in two ways. I mean, the the other the alternative also is the motion could be put in to a letter with the meeting minutes attached and sent off to the state.
And if it's helpful, I can withdraw my motion. And if this second is willing to be withdrawn also, and then I could just ask that we have a discussion about reinforcing our position on the Lake Drive striping project, and then we can figure it out later. So I'll I'll offer to withdraw my motion.
I didn't. Yep, I'm okay.
Okay. So would you like to offer a different motion? Can you just repeat that because I wasn't following it?
I moved it at the next Village Board meeting. We discuss the striping configuration for the Lake Drive reconstruction project.
Second.
Okay.
Got it.
Motion by trustee Stokbrand, seconded by trustee Ursink. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the future item is agenda future item? Future agenda item? Future item for consideration? My goodness. As presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero, so we will see that on a future agenda. Item 12, is there a motion to adjourn? So moved. Second?
Second.
All right. With that attitude, okay, trustee more motion to adjourn by trustee Moore Baldoff, seconded by trustee Lynn. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at 8:54 PM. Thank you very much, everyone.